Time is now seven thirty and this is the October twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-two work session of the Allen Dale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who's joining us in the audience and on the Zoom webinar. At this time, ask everyone to please mute your devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be one opportunity during this meeting for public comment and we'll advise you at the appropriate time. Linda, please read the Open Public Meeting Act announcement.
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in municipal building, and on the Borough website, published in the record within the first ten days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and Borough website.
Great. And Linda, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman.
Here.
Councilwoman Lova Solo.
Birthday girl.
Here, I'm here. Councilman O'Connell.
Here.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yeah.
Councilman Sasso.
Here.
Councilwoman Wozinski.
Yeah.
And Mayor Bernstein.
Here, thank you. So next, we do have the present, we, I'm not sure it's listed as a presentation, but I'm gonna go a little out of order. And then we're gonna do under agenda review. We do have the appointment of a, for the Borough of the Allen Dale Historian. So ever, we've been talking about this for a while. It's on the agenda. I'm thrilled that it's on the agenda. I'm sure Amy is going to have a lot to say or have something to say. But I'm, I'm gonna go first. Fred is a friend. He was my first and perhaps only mentor on the Borough Council, met with me before, before I came on and, you know, tried to tell me, you know, tried to either set me straight or, or show me how it was done. Other than Tyler, Fred's probably the most ardent and passionate supporter of Allen Dale on Facebook. And perhaps beyond. I'm happy to have him in this position. A tremendous amount of credit goes to Amy, I know she'll speak, who was able to bring this home. And my thanks to you, Amy, for all that work. And to Ron, who has been a great liaison in these intervening in the years that I have been the mayor, a great liaison between Fred and the Borough. So with that said, I'm, although I don't get to vote, if I could vote tonight, I would be voting in favor of it.
Sure. I actually have took Fred's seat. I don't know if everybody realizes that on the council, so I replaced Fred when he was on the council. Yeah, Fred has actually done an amazing job. I don't know if anybody's been to his office, but preserving Allen Dale's history is, it's near to, near and dear, I think, to every resident of Allen Dale. And Pat Wardell started this amazing collection and through, without having any technology or any, just kind of a grassroots effort, really did a great job, but we always had that gap. And Fred came along and really did an amazing job filling that gap and just going above and beyond with every little detail. Many times when I needed information, I would just call Fred and say, I need, I need something. When we were doing a proclamation for a firefighter, I didn't have any information on it, I called Fred, so we can honor him. So this will be wonderful for the Borough. I think it'll be a wonderful resource for generations and generations and generations to come. All the great work that we're all doing is now recorded, thanks to Fred, because other than that, most people don't know really what's going on. Quite frankly, so it would be, it's just gonna be wonderful to have a resource that everybody can look back on and, and really cherish. So I'm just very, very happy that we finally got to have this come today.
And we, if you'd like to take the mic, and that would be an appropriate time.
Thank you, I'm done.
No, he asked Fred to speak about what he's doing.
Anyway, let me extend my appreciation to the Mayor and Council and Borough Administration in supporting Allen Dale history, to all of you for supporting the, the idea of the position of Borough Historian, and of course, considering me as your first appointment to this position. So, thank you so much. I'm, I'm shaking with excitement. I'm proclamped. Anyway, I would like to propose three objectives for the position. The first is to do an inventory of the historic assets of the Borough. Okay, which I'm not aware it has ever been done. I'd love to get into the safe downstairs. I remember it from when I left here in two thousand and eight, and I don't know if much has changed. Except maybe it's gotten a little older. So I would love to go through all the nooks and crannies that I remember from yesteryear. Ron has been incredibly helpful in introducing me to some of them, by the DPW building, et cetera. So it's, it's really simple. Just what do we have? What can we do with it? What's the value of it? Prioritizing it, and most importantly, sharing it with the public. The second issue is to establish the position as a Borough resource. I've been doing it personally on a level, I think, with the bully pulpit of the Mayor and Council. It will go much farther, much wider, get much more acceptance and embracement. And at some point, I'll share with you many of the hurdles that I've had to face over the six years. It's not been easy getting, you know, what you would think would be easy to gain everybody's cooperation. It hasn't always been easy, because basically I've just been a longtime resident, you know, with an interest and a passion for my own personal history, my family's history, my community's history. And you show up at the Board of Education, or the library, or Mayor and Council's meeting, and you say, you know, I'd really like to get into all of your records, you know, without any objection. So it took a little while, but I think as we can see, I'm happy to say I've won most of you over. So it's a beautiful thing. So, and whether it's the newsletter, whether it's the website, I'm happy to share what I have. I'm happy to be a resource. As Amy was kind enough to point out, you call me, I run and I look up. I, you know, anytime anybody has ever reached out to me to ask for assistance, you know, I've immediately responded, okay? And let's broaden it to, to it being a community resource, you know? If you can set up an email address for me, or a contact form on the website, send in your questions, ask Fred, you know, or ask the Borough Historian, and I'll just do my best on behalf of the Mayor and Council to, you know, just see what I can do. The long-term goal is really to make this permanent. Okay, so right now, we know this is a temporary appointment done by resolution, which is fine. Training wheels, let's try and, you know, let's talk about all of this. But the ultimate goal is to create a history committee. That's in chapter six of the code, so it's a formalized process. The Borough Historian is part of it. We have a couple of group members. Where basically, the, the recovery, preservation, and sharing of the history of the Borough Allen Dale is an official act of the Mayor and Council. Okay, so right now, it's kind of an ad hoc or difficult thing. So I would love to see that. That's, that's a long-term goal. So anyway, basically, I know you guys want to keep it short, so I'll say, any questions?
How excited are you?
Okay. I'm very excited.
I know you're excited.
It, it is, and, and I really do appreciate it. And I, I guess, I'll cut out my presentation and go straight to the end, which is really the, the bigger thank yous. And if I can use an airplane metaphor, Mr. Mayor, my good friend Ari, thank you for, you know, getting the plane on, you know, in the air. We had many, many conversations over the years of how this might take shape. So I thank you for, for that. To my, my good friend Ron, Director of Operations Kissner, who has been an absolute mensch for the Gentiles in the room. That's a good guy. Basically, he has, he's been a great friend. Ron, you know, helped me get the airplane, you know, above the, the clouds into the sun, into the sunny skies. And he's been incredibly helpful, kind of behind the scenes, which I really appreciate. And finally, to Amy, for landing the plane despite some turbulence on the way down and maybe a couple of unruly passengers. You know, she, she actually, you know, closed the deal. So congratulations on that. And Mr. Mayor, best of luck. Thank you for, you know, your almost four years of service to the community. So, you know, you've been a good friend to me for a long time. And so, as you, I, I don't wanna say come to conclusion of your community career, but this chapter of it, good job, and thank you.
Thank you.
So, otherwise, bye.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is there any costs involved?
Any costs?
Cost to the Borough?
So basically, what I will offer, volunteer if you wanna call it that, is I will, whatever, and I assume I've been working with Ron and somebody on his staff, is point me in front of something, and I'm just gonna, on my own time, my own dime, just tough it through, see what's there. And it's really until I see something that I think I need to raise to the consciousness of the Mayor and Council, we need to do something about this. And I don't know what that is yet, but I have a feeling it's gonna be doing something to digitize, to preserve the record. So from what I remember, and from a recent photo that Amy sent to me, is the, the records, and I know they're back to eighteen ninety-four, okay, in the safe, and they are deteriorating. And I'll just give you, I'll give you that you ask the question, I will give you one visual. When I asked, it was Ann Dodd for a copy of, Ann Dodd for a copy of the eighteen ninety-four minutes, she said she couldn't reproduce them for me because they were too fragile. And she would have to send them out. And that's meeting a legitimate open request, think about that. And so what I did is I said, you know, the heck with it, I have to step up. And I paid a thousand dollars. And I had Ann send out to a local company Smooth Solutions to digitize the first thousand pages of the minutes of the Mayor and Council from eighteen ninety-four to nineteen sixteen. They're now here. You want them?
I do.
And, and again, this is, this is all public information, you know? So I would say with great joy, I did all of this. And to me, the, the joy is a, the problem solving, the, the, you know, overcoming the challenges, but it's now the sharing. Hopefully, my book, I've come up with another book, which is now on Amazon called Allen Dale Memories. And if I may, I'm just gonna, I just wanna read, sorry for saying goodbye and then coming back, an encore. I just wanna read something from here, because this has been sticking in my head for a while. As I try and think of what is a sentiment that really describes the Allen Dale experience and the Allen Dale history. So from page six of the bestselling Images of America Allen Dale, actually only selling, three sentences, I think, right? First, "I was born and raised in Allen Dale. Memories of swimming at Crestwood Lake, walks through the celery farm, nature preserve, Fourth of July fireworks, and Memorial Day parades will be with me forever. I am one of those people who will not leave. Better said, I am part of that group of people that grew up here, understood and witnessed the charm and magic of Allen Dale, and look to be part of its future. I am honored and humbled to be the mayor of the Borough of Allen Dale. As I said when I was sworn in as mayor on January third, two thousand and nineteen, I am standing on the shoulders of giants and I'm deeply indebted to the men and women who made Allen Dale such a great place to live and raise a family. Signed, Ari Bernstein, Mayor of Allen Dale."
So the answer to the question is there will be no costs?
In the short term.
In the short term, and if there's a project, something has to be digitized.
It will be presented to you for your consideration.
Great. Is there gonna be a budget line?
There probably, there might be in the future.
And you thought what that would be?
I, I don't think it would be anything completely, totally significant, but I don't, a couple thousand dollars maybe.
Okay, that sounds reasonable. And I guess it would beyond the obvious, the manages to have a Borough Historian. I'm a history buff for people who know me myself, so I think it's great. I mean, to have an historian. So this information now, once it gets digitized, will be available to folks that may have previously had to submit open requests to get it.
That would be the, that would be my dream.
That'd be huge.
I mean, if you think of-
Yeah, that would be our dream, too.
And, and you know what? I mean, so basically, I have the minutes of the Mayor and Council back to, oh, two thousand and six. I think longer than you have. I have the reorganization minutes back to eighteen ninety-four.
That's, that's all great. So, so it would be great to be able, for anybody with a need to know, just a simple desire to know, learn about this wonderful town, to be able to just go to some repository that you will later create and get it without inconveniencing Borough staff and taking them away from, you know, more important things, and costing them time and money to get those documents.
A Dropbox account, a protocol, a naming protocol, and you can do this tomorrow.
Great. Thank you. I have one in my shed, you can go.
There you go. Anything else? Thank you, folks. Thank you. Thank you so much. Public comment. Anyone from the public wish to be heard?
Okay, so we don't know how we're gonna go about doing this, but.
We'll walk you through it.
I'm sorry.
Kevin Cronin, Ten Alice Street, Allen Dale.
Amir Mark, St. Andrews.
We're just curious to know how we might go about getting a pickleball court in town?
Ah, pickleball.
So I got a neighbor and friend who's absolutely in love with this sport. I'm dying to try it. I don't know what's held me up so long. So Council President Wozinski and I just talked about this last week, or earlier this week. And a resident reached out to me in an email asking me the same question, and it, and it sounds like an easy answer. Although, some research revealed that Ridgewood, you know the story behind the Ridgewood Pickleball Court? So it didn't end well. It was apparently-
They have their courts.
Do they still have the courts? I think they had to shut them down.
And only Ridgewood residents, that was during COVID. And only Ridgewood residents.
Well, yeah, they made it just to residents, so.
So it got a little unruly here, down there at times. So we're just trying to now get our head around how we would manage it for Allen, it would be for Allen Dale residents only.
How?
The pickleball.
No, what's so unruly?
The, the, the demand is so great.
The police.
For it. I mean, how are we gonna-
I mean, that, I mean, that's just one piece of it, is, is, is trying to manage, like, you know, the, the crowds and stuff. So the only place we would be able to have it would be up at Crestwood, well, right now, anyway. And right now, we don't have our, we have sport court, which apparently a pickleball does not bounce on it very well. But we do actually have it lined for pickleball. To redo those tennis courts, when we went to redo them, excuse me, gosh, seven or so years ago, it was, I think, like a million dollars, something insane, because we need completely new drainage there. There's some type of a spring. We had engineers look at it. So we decided to go with the sport court system to have people be able to at least practice and things like that. The problem with that area, too, is that it's not really monitored. So we would, if we were going to put the expenses of the courts in, it would be a little bit hard to monitor.
With that, it would have to be monitored.
It would have to be monitored, because it is so popular. And that could be, that could be-
Whatever the answer is, we have to come up with something.
Yeah, and that could-
Yeah. Not so.
The FOB?
It could be, it could be. So, so we also have a community center that we're building. So that is another option to potentially do something there, and that we are gonna be doing some type of a FOB system that will be on the residence only. So the problem with Crestwood is that we would have to reentire, you know, do the whole thing, and it's engineering, and it's, you know, in the millions. So if we were gonna do something like that, we would have to probably go out for grants and things like that. So, but I, you know, I get it that people do enjoy pickleball. And tennis was a dying sport at the time when we were redoing the courts, and nobody really was playing that much, so it didn't warrant the money. So it's, you know, it's not a dead, completely dead option, but I'm a hundred percent sure how it'll work out yet, but we're thinking about it.
Okay.
To see, you know, if it was possible to do, and how we would go about doing it, that's all, so.
This is like a number of residents.
Yeah, I know, it's, my, my friends are the champions. They go all around. They like travel to Vegas.
So the man is the problem, probably, or the challenge. Let's just call it a challenge.
That's why all the other towns are doing it town-specific.
Well, yeah, as you, as you can see, the expense is pretty extreme, so we're not building a court for the general public to use free. And we're not in the business of selling court time, so.
True.
You know, once we get past the cost, then there's the crowd, you know, control and making it fair for all Allen Dale residents.
And why costs like seventy-five dollars for like a president?
Right.
For the season to be at a badge.
Maybe that's, maybe that's the-
Yeah, and I, I'm not sure that the pickleball court has to be as extensive as a tennis court.
No.
I think you can just do something a little bit more. So it's definitely something I've been looking into, because I've been getting a ton of, you know, requests as well. So it's not the dead thing at all, but I'm definitely thinking about it for the new center as a start.
If it was cheap and easy, you'd be there now.
Thank you. She's saying that in a nice way or not? Oh, my gosh, last year was hilarious. She's like, come on.
So we'll see them now, unless it's a couple of weeks.
But, yeah, it would have to be restricted, and it would have to be Allen Dale residents, for sure.
I mean, it's just, it's hard for me to find any place to play.
You know, um,
It's the same exact, it's the same exact, it's the same exact, I don't know what those, what it's called that we have here.
Oh, this, well, Brookside Racket Club has pickleball.
You have to be a member and have to pay.
Yes, yes, you have to be a member.
Yeah, with George. Jimmy's a great guy.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Anyone else from the public? Sir? It was great to see you.
Hi, Walter.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Walter Widmer, thirty-eight, Hamilton. I'll be very brief. I want to say thank you very much for what you've done with Fred. As you recall, about a year ago, I made the request, do we have a historian?
I, I, I remember that.
And we talked about that and went in a circle, and now it's happened. And I want to thank all of you for what you've done to make it happen, and especially Freddie.
Yep.
Eddie.
His book is very good. I've read it. Not totally, but most of it.
Full disclosure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We appreciate you coming in and your input. And I remember your, your suggestion and request about a year ago. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard? Not seeing anyone. Administration, fairly light agenda, introduction of ordinance twenty-two dash fourteen, that has to do with Land use board fees. Ron, were you, did that come through you? No?
I'm sorry.
Okay. It, it came through the Land Use Board as a request to increase the escrows, et cetera?
Yes.
Okay. And then we have three resolutions on the consent agenda. Any questions of the governing body? Okay. We do have a couple of minutes for reports. Councilman O'Connell, would you like to begin?
Thank you, Mayor. Leaf program is on its second week and going very well. Winterizing of some of the Borough facilities, including removal of water meters is underway. The twenty-twenty-two municipal paving program, Pearl Court and Commerce Layer is complete. And the DPW received a compliment from a resident from Oakland about how outstanding our fields were because their daughter played there two weeks ago. Great, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Councilman Sasso?
Thank you. In facilities, parks, and recreation, the pickleball surge continues. Everything's going smooth for the committee. That's because Mr. Kissner and his team are keeping, or, you know, playing whack-a-mole with everything that comes up in parks, facilities, mostly recreation. And Council President Wozinski has been doing it, who's second on the committee, but has been doing it so long that it's going to continue to go, to go very well in preparation for, well, Crestwood is closed now, but when we prepare for Crestwood, we get our fields ready in the fall and so on and so forth. So no, no real update, other than things are going pretty well, I think.
Great. Thank you. Councilwoman Holman?
So for once, I won't give a long detailed report. However, I do feel like it's important to say that we, once again, have received a positive water quality report, which should be, you know, for first and foremost with water in everybody's mind. The transaction with Veolia continues to move forward. There are always gonna be challenges with any transaction. We're still in the process of working with Veolia to ensure that we have all the proper surveys. As Fred's history would tell, this is an old system, and so we are having to generate the appropriate survey for where exactly all the water lines are, and easements will have to be created in some cases because they refer our own property. We also may have some just challenges along that way moving forward. So we, we have a meeting on Monday, and we'll see how we're gonna iron out some of those challenges. As far as the sewers, I'm assuming that we are continuing to move forward in our negotiations with both Saddle River and Ramsey to update those agreements. We did, in fact, bill Ramsey on the new agreement this past year, because that's really the appropriate way that they should be built. And that is my report.
Thank you. Council President?
Sure. The Borough is still navigating through the legal documents for the front building of two-twenty, two-thirty West Crescent, known as two-twenty. We are meeting this week, we're meeting next week. There is just a lot of documents to go through. Two-twenty is the front building, which is comprised of seventy units and the Municipal Community Center. If you remember, the Municipal Community Center, one half is going to be just a large community center. The other half is going to be a gym, fitness type of flooring on it for, for games, pickleball, basketball. And there'll also be a kitchen there, so it'll be a wonderful addition to the community. This current room is the only room the community has at the moment, so it's much, much needed.
And no pickleball in this room.
We closed on the back building, which is two-thirty West Crescent, last year received ten point two million to pay down the acquisition debt. Two-thirty West Crescent is currently operational, and we're receiving revenue from the pilot, which is called Payment in Lieu of Taxes. Once we close on two-twenty West Crescent, we, we will receive three million fifty thousand dollars for the total acquisition cost of thirteen million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This money, or portion of this money, is gonna go to build the new community center. We're actually meeting with the architects on Monday to review the final plans. They are at what they call ninety percent set. So they're just about bid ready, and when that happens, what we do is we go out to bid, and we get the lowest responsible bidder for the project. We also applied for a federal grant for this project. We made it through the first round. It's stuck in Washington. But it looks like it may be, it may go through, and that will have significant impact on this project. We anticipate to close on two-twenty in the next month or so, which then the demo will commence very, very quickly after that. So, oh, and this entire project has been acquired and will be built without any additional tax dollars. We said that from the beginning, and that remains to be true. I met with the Allen Dale Circle of Care this week. They are gonna be taking over our senior goodie bags that we started two years ago during COVID, and it was really successful. Our seniors loved it. And we probably got more thank yous from that than I think anything usually in the rate that we do in the Borough. And the ladies were so efficient that we had filled the baskets and delivered them all to our seniors. So it just made sense for a, another organization in Allen Dale to take it over, and the Allen Dale Circle of Care fits under that umbrella perfectly. So they're gonna be taking it over, so I gave them all my data and all my information. And we'll be meeting again in the near future, and we'll get those ready to go for our seniors. And lastly, our downtown streetscape is coming along beautifully. Allen Dale residents love it. It's beautiful. We're gonna get baskets with flowers soon hanging. No, it is. It's really looking great. We have a, a good project manager there that's keeping everything in line and working as quickly as possible. So our merchants aren't affected too, too much. And that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. We have one minute, which we're not gonna try to fit another one in. So what I would do is I would request a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Great. One minute, we'll come back. Eight o'clock. And this is the October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two regular session of the Allen Dale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who's joining us tonight in person and via Zoom webinar. At this time, I ask the public president to please- and via Zoom webinar. At this time, I ask the public present to please mute your devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be two opportunities for those present to speak during this meeting and we will advise you at the appropriate times. Linda, please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
In compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the borough website, published in the record within the first ten days of the new year and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the October seventeenth, two thousand twenty two sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
Great, thank you. If you could all please join me, rise and move the flag. Please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Here.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Here.
Councilman O'Donnell?
Here.
I'm sorry, O'Connell. Councilman O'Toole?
There.
Councilman Sasso?
Here.
Councilwoman Wozinski?
Here.
Mayor Bernstein?
Here, thank you. I open the meeting to the public for anyone who wishes to speak on agenda items. Anyone here? Not seeing anyone? Approval of the minutes. We are approving. We're going to do them individually. Linda, I'm not sure who, do you have a list as to who can vote on them and who can't? Or do they need to go by memory?
We should.
We should.
Everyone knows?
I think I do.
Okay. Request a motion to approve the minutes of July twenty one, twenty twenty two work session and July twenty one, twenty twenty two regular session. Thank you, Amy. Second?
Second.
Steve, thank you, Steve. Linda, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Abstain.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wozinski?
Yes.
Great. Next is approval of the minutes for August eighteenth, twenty twenty two work and regular and closed sessions. I would request a motion to approve the minutes, the August eighteen, twenty twenty two work session, regular session and closed session.
So moved.
Thank you, Matt. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Amy. Linda, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
I will abstain. I was not there.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
I am checking. I'm going to say yes unless I, yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Abstain.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
I wasn't here, so abstain.
Councilwoman Wozinski?
Yes.
Next, introduction of ordinance as discussed in the work session. Two dash fourteen, I would request a council member to make a motion to introduce and pass on first reading ordinance twenty two dash fourteen and set the hearing for November seventeenth, twenty twenty two at eight P M. We're soon thereafter in the council chambers of the Allen Dale Municipal Building.
So moved, Holman.
Thank you. Second?
Second, O'Connell.
Thank you, Ed. Linda, please read the title of the ordinance and conduct a roll call.
In ordinance twenty two dash fourteen, an ordinance to amend, supplement and revise the code of the borough of Allen Dale, Land Use Procedures, Chapter forty. Roll call. Councilman Holman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wozinski?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. We have resolution twenty two dash two three seven, twenty two dash two three eight and twenty two dash two three nine. I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Amy. Second?
Holman.
Thank you, Liz. Linda, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wozinski?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Not seeing any. We'll continue with our committee reports. Councilman O'Toole?
Yep, thank you. The police department continues to address traffic issues using proactive and reactive approaches. The big thing Halloween is on Monday. Police Department would like to stress to parents to please closely monitor children, ensuring they remain safe when walking and crossing roadways. Police Department has teamed up with the school PTO to distribute glow stick, glow sticks to trick or treaters. And there will be an increased police presence as well as other traffic safety efforts in place for Halloween night. Curfew Halloween night and goosey night, cabbage night, gate night, whatever, nine P M. Thank you, Suzanne. I would also be remiss if I didn't mention the holiday observers, Halloween parade on Halloween night. Kids coming costume, walk across stage, get some money, have some pizza, good time. Finally, the, the numbers year-to-date fire calls, two hundred and ten. Year-to-date EMS calls, six hundred and thirty four. Year-to-date police record entries and calls for service, thirteen thousand, four hundred and eighty six.
Great, thank you so much. Councilwoman Lovasolo, would you like to give your report?
Yes, please. Is Fred still there?
Yes.
He is. Okay, I just wanted to just take a quick moment before I give my quick report to thank Fred for all that he has done to really preserve the history of our borough. You know, as someone who was involved with the grassroots effort in this town to preserve what we now call the John Fowl House. Fred, I really do appreciate all that you've put into recording and retaining our historic, you know, our news, our documents and our artifacts. So I do appreciate it. October nineteenth, which was just last week, the Land Use Committee met via Zoom. And once again, you know, discussed the ongoing kind of blanket issues that we're dealing with in regard to drainage in the town and trees, cutting of trees and then individual property issues. I just want to thank my committee as usual for, for working so hard and our employees who spend a lot of time fielding phone calls and visiting sites with resident issues. So we're moving along. Thank you.
Great. Is that the end of your report?
It is.
Great, thank you so much. The mayor's report. Fourth quarter taxes are due on November one, twenty twenty two. You have a grace period until November tenth. A thank you to the Allen Dale Chamber of Commerce, specifically Tyler and Claudia for the fabulous Fall Fest on October fifteenth. Beautiful, great day in Allen Dale. COVID tests are available in the municipal clerk's office at Borough Hall, donated by the Bergen County Health Department. And the general election is on Tuesday, November eighth from six. Polls are open from six A M. to eight P M. Important day, everyone, you get out and vote. Attorney Ray Wiz?
Thank you, Mayor. As was reported by Council President Wozinski and Councilwoman Holman, our two substantial transactional matters are in full swing and probably both looking toward a, about a thirty day horizon or so, I think, on both of them with respect to closing dates. Obviously, a lot of things to be done on both, on both fronts. I know that Tom Borji of my office and our special counsel have been meeting or sending emails back and forth on a daily basis as it relates to two twenty. I have been involved on a daily basis with, I think we're up to about three or four Zoom calls per week. And I would say double that number of phone conferences as we try to bring the, the water utility sale to fruition. Beyond that, some meetings that interface with my office and, and TJ as well, with Chief Dillon on some departmental matters with Mr. Kister on some land use and property maintenance issues, hopefully bringing them to peaceful closures. And with the Borough Clerk's Office as it involves Oprah requests, rather than that, not a darn thing.
It's been quiet, right? Linda, our municipal clerk, anything to report?
Yes. So as the mayor said, general election is on Tuesday, November eighth. The clerk's office received the voting machines here at the borough and at the firehouse and some other election materials. The polling pads, the poll pads will be coming soon. There's still time to apply for vote by mail ballot application. The deadline for that is November first, so that they have time to mail the ballot to you. Early voting locations start Saturday, October twenty ninth through Sunday, November sixth. Monday through Saturday is ten A M. to eight P M. And Sunday, it's ten A M. to six P M. Please check the borough website for more information on the general election. Other than that, the clerk's office is in good hands with the staff we have in place here. And I also want to thank my assistant, Amanda Richards. She's been handling all the Oprah requests for me and has been doing a wonderful job with that. It's big help for me.
Great, thank you so much. Director of Communications, John Gill?
We're starting to prepare the recycling guide for twenty twenty three, how quickly a year goes. So I sent a request out to everyone, just of your interactions with residents and the comments or any updates you want to see on that. Please let me know. Besides that, working with the clerk's office on the upcoming election. It was a great day on the Allen Dale Fall Fest, manning our booth. We had some great interactions with everyone, positive feedback. So it was a good day. That's it.
Thank you. Borough webmaster and I T, Tyler Yaccarino?
Just a couple of things while Fred is here. I wanted to thank Fred. He's been a great resource at school project many years ago and he was the only one who could get me the information I needed. So it's been great working with Fred the past few years. Happy to see him continuing to help us in a great way. As Ari and John had mentioned, we had Fall Fest on the fifteenth of October, my last one ever, putting that on the record. Turned out to be a great day, a lot of positive interaction with the residents. So we were really happy. Really happy to have that day and really nice weather, good turnout and positive feedback from all the vendors, which was outstanding. Police Department, we finished the server migration after what seems like it was a long road, but I'm happy to say that that project is finally wrapped up. We'll be doing some borough I T projects in the near future. We'll meet with Ron, Amy and John about. And other than that, everything is status quo.
Great, thank you, Tyler. Director of Operations Administrative Officer, Ron Kister?
Myself and Chief Mike Dillon met with Representative Public Service and the vendor who was doing the job. Over there, steel, probably a couple of money for this. Pretty lengthy thorough project. They're actually been in my town, have their website this year. Involved with that. How? They'll be ready for it. It takes a lot of my time. It's a good project, which is for the steel mill, their steel that, yes, is used now. It's not very efficient. Leaks, it's a great product when it's done. Very labor intensive.
What do they have to do? What are they doing?
They're changing out the bottom streets, the whole pipe, that's going to be a seal.
Go under the.
The ground, the ground will be getting dug up. What they were doing high, what I tried to do here is they use twenty streets and they want to patch twenty streets, I have to be able to negotiate, patch eight and pay twelve. That type of example. That's what it has to do. We'll get, we'll come out at great P M. We get some shoots, maybe that we probably were. The management intention project.
I mean, I'm thrilled that you're going to be managing because I think also we need some water and may have some, we may have some water sewer. So that's, it's a good, I mean, it's, it is good. That is, that's a huge project.
In regards to the paving of the Pearl Court and Commerce, it myself was one of the president's fan club, but it wasn't Chief Dillon. I was dreading paving those two streets because they're very busy. Mike, when I met with the commercial tenants, the manager of the buildings and the project went better than I could imagine. You didn't have to do that. It was really rough. It was really a heat up. Did a great job doing that. It's a lot of work. It's coordinated. It's during the day, during business hours. It worked out very well. Brought up the downtown streetscape project. It's moving along and Kevin, a pilot from Megan Drake, doesn't actually have his construction manager. Trying to protect me. People bad cop, worst cop. So he yelled at them and I really. The, the, the contractor has a couple of subs. I don't want some subcontractors on the job, but I want to know some contractors. Things like that. He says, and things like that. And you can know that kind of stuff. So I thought, it's working out well. We ought to make the next progress. Asking the lights on, certain things the papers are doing. If I ask to do something, they go down the way. It's first one, the driveway, they can pick up for safety reasons, maybe get around the drive. I've got competition. That worked out very well. The other, one of the hats I wear, which I don't do, we walk on most of the fair housing coordinated for the borough. Two incidents, I need assistance from the office. Maybe contact with a firm that specializes. What I need to do with these two fair housing issues. So with that, thank you guys on that.
Great. Thank you very much. Chief Dillon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just echo Director Kister's comments about the public service gas replacement project.
Right.
As needed, there will be police officers on site. I stress to the residents to use those police officers if they have any questions. Don't be afraid to approach them. If there's a road closure and your house is within that closure, those officers are there to assist you directly. They may also call the police desk. I will try to, in our meetings with public service, I've asked for a two-week look ahead so I can have an idea where they'll be two weeks from today or, or whenever they start and try to organize whatever houses are impacted, direct contact with those residents, to ease our concerns and facilitate better passage. To improve. Hiring process continues, adding to our staff to address needs of community and department. The website was merged with the town site, the allendalenj.gov. The official domain cut over occurred about fifteen minutes ago.
Fresh news.
John Gill for his hard work. He truthfully did a hundred percent of the setup and flawless. This will save the town thousands of dollars, streamline the process for updating the site and disseminating information. I T contractors, Coban Computer Solutions have also been instrumental helping us bring the department and the borough together digitally. Thank you, Tyler and Jeff.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Open the floor to the public. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Thirty-two Sherry Drive. Thank you, folks. Much appreciated for your confidence in the appointment. Suzanne, wherever you are, thank you. Let me also thank John Gill. John has also been helpful. Linda, welcome to the borough. Tyler and I have gotten together and worked and talked about things in the past, so I look forward to discussions there. I just wanted to show you one little thing and it's been a challenge for me. My database, which is a database, is digital, not physical. I don't collect things. The challenges I have, for those of you that might remember, one forty-six Park Avenue, the little house that next to Memorial Park that has been falling down that was owned by Janine Cox, Nafesi Cox, as she was cleaning out the attic.
That's coming out of your budget.
She came upon this odd-looking document that was dated eighteen eighty-four. And I was kind of perplexed, even though I recognized the name, Stephen Van Blarkham and Parago, who was one of the first council members. And it was, it said Hohocus. I said, Hohocus. Yeah, we were Hohocus Township in eighteen eighty-four. This is the oldest real estate document out of Janine's attic in the history of the borough that I have ever been able to find that Pat Wardell and the Allen Dale Historic Societies has ever collected. I don't know what to do with it. So if I, so if I can, I just want to make a comment. You have these beautiful walls here. I have.
Got plans, don't worry.
Into my office, I have gazillion prints and posters that I would be delighted to donate to the borough to help you use this as a forum. And maybe we can have a couple of more people come and visit and on the way, learn a little bit about more of the history of the borough. So for the real estate attorneys and realtors who want, you know, this is a deed, eighteen eighty-four.
Does it have recording information on it?
Are there any easements on it?
Yeah, and Ari, if you turn it over, there's, there's the other side.
There's a warranty deed, this is danger.
So I, you sent me a picture of that and I never got the guy's number. I went to school with the Steve Van Bar.
Yeah, right, you know, so again, on behalf of those of us, you know, who love to talk about preserve all this fun stuff. It's really interesting stuff and especially if you're, you know, really. It's really interesting stuff, and especially if you're, you know, really, you know, involved in a specific interest. And in nineteen fourteen, I'm reading about the minutes that created the Water Department. There you go, you know?
I want the piece of pipe, though.
So anyway, again, folks, really, I thank you so much for your support. I look forward to working with everybody.
And if you can find a nice place for this, you know, I'd be happy to.
That's great. Thank you. Anyone else in the public wish to be heard? Come on down. Your name and address for the record.
Yep. Good evening. My name is Maria Borst and I live at twenty-two Oakwood Road with my husband and two young children. This is now the second town council meeting I've attended regarding an ongoing issue for over five months now that we've had with a just blatantly defiant neighbor. This neighbor, John Roland of Nine Cambridge Drive, constructed an unwanted and unpermitted retaining wall made from two-by-fours and plywood that he affixed to the fence on our side of the property. I was forced to attend an August council meeting since my emails and phone calls regarding the resolution, a resolution for this violation. We're going unanswered for weeks. At this time, it was acknowledged at this meeting that it was the council's responsibility to uphold the town's ordinances and codes and protect the basic rights of all residents. In response, a letter of remedial action was sent to John and Sandra Roland on August twenty-ninth, giving them until September seventh to set up a mutually agreed upon date with the borough for the removal of this retaining wall, or the town would initiate enforcement proceedings. That's what the letter had said. September seventh came and went and the boards remained. After five weeks of being really patient and beyond the set deadline, we emailed town for an update on October fourteenth. We were once again ignored, so we followed up a week later. And we were informed that the removal of boards would not be happening until our final ASBelt was signed off by town, despite the retaining wall already having been determined to be out of compliance with Borough Code. After engineer completed further work to show that indeed our project did not increase runoff into the Roland's property, our permits were closed and our final ASBelt was approved by town officials. I'm coming here tonight to request a definitive response on this very blatant violation of not only town codes and ordinances, excuse me, my family's right to feel safe in Allendale. This makeshift retaining wall that John Roland created on my side of the property creates an extremely unsafe environment for my young children and a huge eyesore to the property we designed to, we designed to make a beautiful space to enjoy with our family. These two-by-fours plywood boards and now jagged metal netting that was placed on top on our property need to be removed immediately. The town officials have already deemed that this must be removed and we are now seven weeks past that initial deadline where enforcement proceedings should have been taken, I'm assuming, but we're not apparently. This type of behavior from the Roland's is completely unacceptable and I would sincerely hope that it would not be legitimized by town officials in a town as we're now, excuse me, as renowned as Allendale. We're really excited to move here.
Thank you. Do you want to speak to that or?
I think Ron may have a better handle on the report from the engineer.
Today, Anthony, Mike Breland were out there today.
Yep.
They received your, their weekly engineers' report. They got it. And Mike wasn't in town today. Mike was supposed to be contacting me tomorrow. You know, the findings that it's like, Mike, once I know that, I'll let the land use board know, let the land use committee know and the source know.
So I just have a question. Why was my final ASBelt tied to like something that I had followed every single code and ordinance? I worked with Mike Breland and Anthony Hackett very closely. They were on my property a bunch of times since we had complaints. I paid for every permit. We had a performance guarantee that the town is still holding. I did everything by the book. I mean, I want to do everything right. So somebody trespass onto my property, built this on my side of the fence, and then my final ASBelt was tied to them removing it. But the letter didn't say that. The letter said it had to be removed.
You must leave your landscaper changed. I won't speak from Mr. Breland. I think the original plans, your landscaper changed the burns.
Well, he, but Mike Breland was aware of that. He approved it, but.
Let me finish, please. You asked me a question. So what the answer was, your question was, they were waiting for your engineer to report what the landscaper change for the ASBelt were okay with the drainage. And I guess you just got that today.
But that's not the letter that you had sent. You had sent a letter saying that by September seventh, that these neighbors had to be setting up a mutually agreed upon date with you.
To remove the wood.
To remove the wood.
And it's funny, they also had, is that, because that was, the wood made the fence a violation. My understanding, the additional wire, chicken wire that's on the fence is not a violation. But again, I'm not speaking further, borough officials. I will get Anthony's comment on what I saw today because I wasn't out there. So I answered your question about the drainage. And in regards to the fence, if it's now in compliance, the method of study rules, like it's in compliance, it's not a violation.
So at the August meeting, when I went, when I came here and I spoke, and you were here as well, I did mention that they already had that wire netting put on top of it. So you were aware of that and even since then.
This is, this is not going to be resolved this evening. We know that people are in the field today. Let Mr. Kissner get his report from the engineer and then he can respond accordingly.
Okay, but do we, I mean, this has been, this happened Father's Day weekend.
Okay, the chronology you put on the record.
Yeah.
All right, I had an opportunity to speak to it. You know, something happened today. Let us get a handle on what happened and we'll be able to respond more formatively.
So when should I really expect a response concerning?
Mr. Kissner will talk to Mr. Breland and the construction code official, Anthony Hackett, tomorrow.
Okay.
And hopefully he'll be able to get the information tomorrow. If not, assuming a couple of days after that.
Okay.
It'll be next week by time I play.
Fair enough.
Because my head doesn't work on Fridays. It's right in today. I'll see Mike tomorrow.
Okay, but I just do want to make it clear that just because this man had had more time allowed by town to keep these boards on there and then added this metal like mesh on top that's completely jagged. I mean, you can like catch your, like, your whole like shirt on and everything. My kids are in the backyard. If they were to get hurt, that's not compliant, to be clear.
Can I ask a question? This is on your property, this retaining wall piece of?
He came onto our property and built it on our side of the property.
It's on your property?
Yep, because we have the markers from the property.
My, my understanding is it's on their property. They may have come onto your property to put it up.
Well, we have the marker right there.
Okay, well, let's let Mr. Hackett decide on that.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'd be more than willing to like to bring out our engineer too to do more points. But it is something that's been ongoing for a while. That's why I had to come twice here. And I understand that you do have to have conversations with Anthony Hackett because it just came out today. But I do want to make it clear that this prolonged kind of decision-making was really unacceptable and really a detriment to us based on how much harassment we've had to endure too from these neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public wish to be heard? Not seeing anyone. I would request a motion to adjourn the regular session. Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.